Okay, welcome everyone to Canyon City Planning Commission Meeting Tuesday, August 21st, 2017. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Denise, please call and roll.
Certainly. Good evening. Chairman Maloney.
Here.
Commissioner Bates.
Here.
Commissioner Dorito.
Here.
Commissioner Clark.
Here.
Commissioner Hammack.
Here.
Commissioner Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Ladue.
Here.
And Councilmember Gill.
Here.
Okay, thank you. On to approval of the minutes. I'd now like to ask for approval of the minutes from the July 18th, 2017 regular meeting. Who is here? You weren't, Greg was here. You were here.
Are there any corrections to the minutes? I'm sorry.
Does anyone have any corrections to the minutes? Okay, hearing no corrections. I need a motion in a second, please.
I will move to go approve the minutes from last meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Harmon. Second from Commissioner Bates.
Second.
Denise, call and roll, please.
Commissioner Harmon.
Yes.
Commissioner Bates.
Yes.
Chairman Maloney.
Yes.
Commissioner Dorito.
Yes.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Hammack.
Yes.
Commissioner Ladue.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, yes.
Okay, thank you. Our first public hearing tonight is pertaining to a zone change from R1 planned unit development to C commercial and OPR open space, proposed Lot 1 and Outlet A, respectively Ninth Street West subdivision exemption. I now open the public hearing. The provisions of the city municipal code and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as if set forth verbatim. Is the applicant here? Would you like to come up to the podium, please? Please state your name.
Yeah, my name is Chris Cornella.
Okay. Hi, Mr. Cornella.
How are you?
How are you? Do you want to tell us a little bit about the project?
Yeah, we purchased that property, which is next across the street from 27 North Ninth, and with the intent of actually developing that property as an extension of our current storage facility. And during the process, we decided that we didn't need to actually all the land and we've moved to grant the city, I think a little over 42 acres, with us taking about five acres to continue that development.
Okay. Are there any questions of the applicant from the commission? If not, Terry, do you have a staff report, please?
I do. Thank you, Chairman, and members of the commission. This is a public hearing for a zone change request for what is now Lot 4 of the Fremont County Family Center PUD, from R1 to two separate zones for two separate parcels. One would be commercial and the other would be OPR, which is basically open space. The Cornella brothers, as Chris mentioned, had purchased this property wanting to expand their business across the street from where they are in the county on Ninth Street, and they did not need all of the land. And as I indicated to you in an email earlier this week, their application has gone through a couple of iterations. And so the application is inconsistent with what you see in the plat document that's in here. So let me just explain. They were originally going to do five lots and have now pared that down to one lot for their business, which is on this zone change request map that you have, is Lot B, about five and a half acres. The remaining parcel, part of the parcel, is 42 acres, which they have generously agreed to donate to the city for the storm, and it's going to the Storm Water Utility. It has a very high water table. It's difficult to develop, and our Storm Water Utility will use it for storm water purposes, water retention, and possibly open space uses in the future. That hasn't, none of that has been decided, but the zoning will be what's called OPR. That's basically it in a nutshell. We did provide written notice and mail, I'm sorry, the property was posted and we did written notice to adjacent property owners. We did have a couple of inquiries. There were no concerns. Everybody was actually very happy that this, most of this was going to be open space. The city has and is in the process of entering into an agreement with the Cornella brothers for this donation of land to waive certain development requirements. That is in process, and that agreement was not ready in time for you to see it. It will go to the, to the city council, however, and of course, the Cornellas do have that and they're reviewing it at this time. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And one of the other discrepancies I wanted to let you know about was, in the staff report, I called these Lot 1 and Outlet A. That has been changed to Lot B and Lot A, which we're fine with. It was just a discrepancy that was done at kind of the last minute and we didn't, we weren't able to change our staff report. So if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. There are, there is one condition of approval, and that is that they are going through a subdivision exemption process to create this plat. That's at the staff level. Here, for zoning, however, they have to go to Planning Commission and Council to get approval. So we're trying, in order to coordinate those, we have to do a condition of approval that would require them to go ahead and they first have to get that subdivision exemption plat done, so that we have actually established those two parcels, and then we'll put the zoning on top of it. And hopefully by the time they get to the city council hearings, that will have been already established and we will have approved that plat. We're almost there.
Okay, thanks, Terry. Are there any questions of staff?
The, Chairman, I have a question. So the zone change shall become effective only on recording of the plat.
That's correct.
And then if the subdivision exemption plat is not recorded within 12 months, then the zone change is lifted. And what we're being asked to do tonight is approve both the plat and the zone change, is that right?
No, you, you won't be approving the plat. You're approving the zone change conditioned upon them getting the plat finished.
Okay, okay. And so my, my question is, this is, this is kind of a conditional zone change, and, and it's perhaps more philosophical, not necessarily related specifically to this project, but it is, this project is an example of the question. The question is, if you have a conditional approval, the, is it not better to make the approval conditioned upon the action, rather than approving, and then if the action is not taking, taken disapproving? So in other words, what we're saying is, we're saying, we're going to approve the zone change, and then if the, if the plat is filed, then that becomes a final action. But if it's not, it becomes, it's not a final action. It's in essence disapproved. And, and kind of the concern I have about that is that if you, if you take an action, if you, if you approve something based on something that may happen in the future, things may transpire in the meantime that, for instance, somebody spends money on their project, makes changes, you know, the, the, it seems to me that it would be better to approve it conditionally upon the action, and then, once the action is taken, then final approval is given, rather than giving final approval upfront, basically is what I'm saying.
I, I understand that. We allow folks to come through with processes that run simultaneously. It ha, it has been our practice. If we wanted to wait until that approval was granted for the plat, then that would have slowed them down in the process.
I see.
Now, it, so that, this is how we get around that, by a conditional approval. We could do otherwise, and philosophically speaking, we, we could, but in this instance, we're trying to help them through the process as quickly as we can.
I, I understand, and that, that seems to me is sufficient and a complete explanation of the, of the situation we have here in front of us, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Terry.
Sure, sure.
Any other questions or concerns for, for staff or for the applicant at this time? Okay. All right, I'm going to close this public hearing. And there's no further discussion. I'm under the impression there's no further discussion or questions. I now call for a motion and a second on the request based upon the findings.
If, before you begin that, if I might, I'd like to change this just a little bit because I've got some misnomers on the legal description. So, let me make sure I've got this right, and then I'll tell you what to change on your, So as you're going through on your findings of fact, your legal description number one should be new Lot B.
N, new Lot B.
Not new Lot 1. And then the legal description number two should be new Lot A, not new Outlet A.
Will we put those in the approval with the conditions?
Mm-hmm, you will. And so if you go down to motion number one, item number two, that should be new Lot B. Regarding new Lot B, there is adjacent nearby commercial zoning. And then if you go to number three after that, change new Outlet A to just new Lot A. That way we'll be consistent with what's on the plat.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dorito, motion number one. I saw you raise your hand.
Yeah, I was going to make a motion. Chairman, that the Canyon City Planning Commission, upon conducting the public hearing on the above-captured zone change request, and after considering the testimony presented by the applicant, city staff and other interested parties finds as follows, the area for which the rezoning is requested is changed or is changing to such a degree that is in the public interest to encourage a redevelopment in the area, referencing new Lot B, that there is adjacent and nearby commercial zoning and commercial development along the arterial roadway generally, and is generally appropriate.
Does anyone else feel any of those other apply? Do we, do we need to mention them?
I, it was, as I was putting this together, it was my estimation that all three applied.
Okay.
Do you want to take a look at them and continue with your motion, if you, if you believe they apply?
Um, I felt like that one was most applicable, but I, I could see, I could see where all three would have applicability. The land to be rezoned was zoned in error and is presently zoned inconsistent with the policies. The proposed rezoning is necessary to provide community-related use, which was not anticipated at the plan of adoption, so I would, I would concur with all three.
Okay. Fair enough, Terry.
Sure, if you guys agree with that.
Okay.
These words change that.
And a second. Commissioner Hammack, seconds.
That would be.
Any further discussion? Denise, call and roll, please.
Commissioner, Commissioner Dorito.
Yes.
Commissioner Hammack.
Hi.
Chairman Maloney.
Hi.
Commissioner Bates.
Hi.
Commissioner Clark.
Hi.
Commissioner Harmon.
Hi.
Commissioner Ladue.
Hi.
Okay, motion number one passes. Motion number two. Need a motion and a second on motion number two findings of fact.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hammack.
I make a motion that based on the above findings of fact, that Canyon City Planning Commission, that we make the following recommendation to the city council of Canyon City. Approval of request for rez, approval of request for rezoning, and with the following condition, the zone change request shall become effective only upon the recording in the Fremont County records of the subdivision exemption plat for Ninth Street West subdivision exemption, as such lots, parcels are identified in this application. If the subdivision exempted plat is not recorded within 12 months of the approval of this zone change application, said zone change shall become null and void through no further action of the city.
And can we, do we need to add the changes to the descriptions as well?
No.
We don't need to add that? Okay. All right, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Clark, second. Denise, call and roll, please.
Commissioner Hammack.
Hi.
Commissioner Clark.
Hi.
Chairman Maloney.
Hi.
Commissioner Bates.
Hi.
Commissioner Dorito.
Hi.
Commissioner Harmon.
Hi.
Commissioner Ladue.
Hi.
Okay, all passed. Thank you, Mr. Cornella.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night. Okay, um, we are on to the second public hearing, which is a zone change from R2 and MH1 to R3 for Lot 1, Oasis New Horizon subdivision exemption, or, and 1261 Park Avenue. The provisions of the city municipal code and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as if set forth verbatim. I will open the public hearing. Do we have an applicant, or should I start with a staff report?
Before we actually begin the public hearing, and I'll suggest after our request that you close it, the applicant has requested that this be tabled until next month. There is, um, he is in ongoing discussions with a neighbor regarding the subdivision plat that was just recently done on this property. And there seems to be perhaps a discrepancy, we don't know that yet, in the boundary line. And we want to make sure that the neighbor was concerned about that. And they have acquiesced to table this until such time as we all come to an agreement and an understanding about that, and they will take that forward, and they hope that that will be, they'll be able to do that by next month.
Okay. Well, based on that, then I request we table it till next month, next month's meeting, which is September?
Uh, 19th?
19th, sounds right. Do I need a motion for that, or can I just close the public hearing?
I think you can just close it.
Okay, public hearing is closed on that item. Moving on. Public hearing, Canyon Reserve Minor Subdivision, a subdivision of four lots at 441 Four Mile Lane and in the RL Rural Living Zone District. The provisions of the city municipal code and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as if set forth verbatim. And we'll start with a staff report on this one.
Thank you, Chairman Maloney and members of the commission. This is a four-lot subdivision, it's called a minor subdivision. Written notice was mailed to all the property owners within 300 feet, and notice was published at least 15 days ahead of this hearing, as is required. The subdivision is called Canyon Reserve. J.D. and Amy Kraus own the property. It's about 17 acres and it's on Four Mile Lane. There's a one single-family home and a barn structure on the property currently, and they're seeking to create four conforming RL-zoned lots that range from 2.2 to about six acres. Because the subdivision contains more than one additional lot and less than six lots, there's no dedication of right-of-way, it being processed, and it's being processed as a minor subdivision. City engineer Adam Lancaster provided comments and requirements for the subdivision approval. That's in your staff report. We have had some other referrals from the county health department regarding sewage systems, I mean, the septic system, Fremont Sanitation District, the Canyon City Area Fire District. Those are all comments that are in your application. We are in the process of putting the finishing touches on this plat. And we have had no responses to the written notice. One of the things that you will note is that this property is not within, um, the distance requirements for being on a public sewage system. And so they are going to be allowed to use onsite waste disposal systems, basically a septic system. We have notes on the plat around that. Other public services like water, of course, reservices and that kind of thing will be provided. And I'll answer any questions that you might have. The plat is in your application. This, oh, let me also say, the last time we met, we discussed the change from R1 to RL zoning for all of this property. This was a dual-zoned property that was an error, should have been corrected some time ago. So that's in the process right now, is going to council on the 21st. So that zoning will be accomplished before this subdivision is done.
We've already, we've already done that, right? We've already?
You have already made a recommendation for approval for that zoning, yes.
And I have a question. How did you say this was going to be zoned?
RL.
Okay.
So that's rural living, kind of our large estate lot zoning, and about as close to agriculture as we get.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions of staff? Mr. Hammack.
I do, the, I note the Canyon City Fire Protection District letter and the comments that staff made, is it the, is it the applicant's intention to establish a new fire hydrant in, in this development, or is that something that may happen in the future?
Well, I can let him speak to that, the applicant is here, but that's generally, will be handled at a building permit application time.
Thank you.
So.
If that's what Mr. Kraus understands.
Yeah, I wasn't.
Mr. Kraus, state, well, we know who you are, but state your name, please.
I, J.D. Kraus, 441 Four Mile Lane. It was brought to my attention that, that may be a requirement of, of the fire district, but I wasn't clear, I hadn't asked Terry actually, you know, the timing of that, if in fact I would be responsible for that, or if it's at the building permit stage.
And now you are clear?
Well, and we don't, it, this is, sometimes this is a little bit of a touchy subject. The Canyon City Area Fire District is not the city, and those requirements we make known to the applicant, and that has to be done between the applicant and the fire district as to when that happens and how that happens.
Okay.
Just to let you know that.
Okay.
Sometimes they will also, because of the size of these properties, they sometimes require you to have a, a long driveway with turnaround, so that they can provide proper fire service if, if that's needed.
Okay.
But that's why we provide that information to you, just so you have a heads up.
Okay, so I should get in touch with them, is what you're doing?
Yeah, if you're planning on building anything anytime soon.
Okay. I have to sell a lot first, so. Councilman Gill.
Does that mean, Terry, that, there we go, let's try that. I really don't need that. But does that mean that this is going to be a requirement when he does this? Because the fire department has said, hey, this is what we need to have?
It could be.
Is it going to be a requirement for the end result?
It could be, yes.
Pardon me?
It, yes, it could very well be, unless there's.
What's the deciding factor on that? And this is just educational.
Well, that's up to them.
Pardon me?
That will be up to the fire district.
Okay, so if they put their hand down and they say, we want a fire hydrant there, then everything could stop at the fire hydrant.
It could.
Isn't there?
It could.
Okay. What's your feelings on that, sir?
You know, I mean.
If they say you gotta have a fire hydrant, are you gonna say, okay, fine, let's put a fire hydrant in?
Yeah, I would like to push it off as far toward me actually having some, you know, revenue coming from the sale of the lots.
Of course, of course, yeah.
I'd, I'd rather not have to do it on the front end, but if it's a requirement for the safety of the residents, obviously I would, you know, be open to that. I, I did talk to somebody on staff the other day, and the, the fire district has made a requirement if it's within 600 feet.
Right, I read that.
Recently, and within 400 feet recently. And so it, it seems like I really do need to have a conversation with them and figure out what is, what is going to be required. I know that there is one fire hydrant on, not very far from the south corner, kind of in front of Lyons's property, on Four Mile Lane, that should service a couple of the lots, Lot 4, which is my residence now, and possibly Lot 3. And then we would just have to figure out where the actual homes are going to be built, whether or not the fire hydrant is close enough to service lots 1 and 2. So I just need to talk to, it sounds to me like.
Okay, but you're, you're ready to do that, once you get some cash flow going off these properties and such?
Yeah, if that's a requirement.
Okay. I mean, if it comes down to, yes, you have to have it, you're saying, okay, yeah, I know I gotta have it and we can move forward, yeah.
I, I believe so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions of staff or the applicant? I have a question, if anyone, if no one else does. Terry, was there a limitation on acreage and septic systems?
Well, at the county, it's two acres.
Okay, it's two, at the county. What about for the city?
No, there isn't. Generally, what we have is adequate and available. Well, he doesn't, they're so far away from the Fremont Sand District that there's no way that they could hook up to that. They're over 1,000 feet away. So this is adequate and it is available. I mean, a, a septic system is adequate and available.
Okay. That was my only question. Any other questions of the applicant or staff? All right, doesn't look like it. Any comments from the audience? Okay, I'm gonna, I would like to now close this public hearing. There's no further discussion that I can tell. I'd now like to call for a motion and a second on the request based upon the findings.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Hammack, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Canyon City Planning Commission, upon conducting a public hearing for the, on the above-captured request for subdivision, and after considering testimony presented by city staff, the applicant and other interested parties, that we find that notice of public hearing was properly given as required by law. that notice of public hearing was properly given as required by law. The proposed subdivision meets the criteria for approval of a minor subdivision in the City of Canyon City.
Need a glass of water for the rest?
And do I need to, do I need to go through the subsections?
You know, I, I don't think that you necessarily need to other than to indicate that it's in compliance with those subsections A through F.
And that, and that...
In the advisory report.
And that the subdivision is in compliance with the listed sub clauses of A through F in our findings of fact.
I will second that if we're gonna deal with that.
Seconded by Commissioner Harmon. Any further discussion? Denise Call, roll please.
Commissioner Hammerick.
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon.
Aye.
Chairman Maloney.
Aye.
Commissioner Bates.
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue.
Aye.
Okay, is there only one motion on this item? There should be... Well, now we're gonna move to approve. So now I'd like to call for a motion based on the findings of fact.
Oh, sorry, it is number two.
Okay. So would, can I get a motion based on the finding of fact?
Chairman Maloney, I'll make a motion that based upon the above findings, a fact that the Canyon City Planning Commission hereby makes the following recommendation to the council of the City of Canyon City. Approval... Approval of the subdivision, but with the following modification. Prior to the recording of the minor subdivision plat, the application rezone of the property RL Rural Living shall be approved by the City Council of Canyon City.
I will second that.
Commissioner Harmon, second. Any further discussion? Denise Call, roll please.
Commissioner Dorito.
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon.
Aye.
Chairman Maloney.
Aye.
Commissioner Bates.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Aye.
Commissioner Hammerick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Kraus. You're all set. Thank you, you're all set. All right. Okay. We have one last item where we need to consider revision to the bylaws to change the day and time of the regular planning commission meeting. So there was a memorandum suggests changing the bylaws of the planning commission to the 4th Wednesday from the 3rd Tuesday to begin at 6 o'clock instead of 7 o'clock and this will start in October. Do we need to vote on this, Terry, or do we just discuss and say, okay?
Discuss and, yeah, you should, you should vote on it.
We should vote on it?
Yes.
Motion, second.
You should.
Okay. So any discussion about changing the meeting date to the 4th Wednesday?
I have a couple of things I'd like to find out.
What's that?
I have a couple of things I'd like to find out. We're gonna change this from, I guess I'll use the word of past practice of 10 years of Tuesdays to the 4th Wednesday. This is it, we're not gonna have to come back six months from now and say, the attorney can't come on a Wednesday, so we're gonna have to change it to a Thursday?
My understanding is that that will not happen, that they will be available.
That's your understanding, though?
Yes, well, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, but I...
I'm not a real strong opponent, you know what I'm standing on this.
I do, I do understand and believe me, as painful as it's been for you, it's been that much for me as well. So...
Misery does love company.
I, I, I'm confident that this is going to be, this is going to be a one and lasting change.
Yeah, because we've already turned this down, I think, twice, right? Once or twice?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Gill.
Are there any other days that they are available? Or is this kind of the only thing? And I've voiced this concern, is that, I mean, every other week is a meeting week for me and I have clients on the Western Slope. And what this does is it makes it both weeks where I cannot go over, if I get a service call and service my clients or be absent here. And I think probably my absence here is probably less important on a rare occasion that I need to do that than the absence of a commissioner. I mean, I will do everything in my power to do it, but sometimes when a customer calls, we give a level of, a level of service and we don't want to say, well, you know, it's gonna be another week. So like I said, it's just something that I will do everything in my power and it's not gonna come up a lot, but maybe, you know, once or twice or three times a year or something where it's gonna conflict. Because if I get a piece of equipment dropped over there, by my rep agreement, I have to set it up and train it within a certain amount of time. And I don't want to jeopardize what I've got. So what I'm saying here, I guess, is if the rare occasion that that does happen, then I will ask to be excused and...
Okay.
Is there any problems with that that anybody can see?
Does anyone have any issues with the council representative missing a few meetings here and there due to work if we change the date?
Well, I guess that would be the scenario for almost anybody sitting on there technically.
True.
Right, but I like to be wide open about it. You know what I mean, and say, hey, this may come down. And like I said, the chances of it, you know, two or three times a year is probably about max. And probably less than that.
Yeah, and I don't see an issue with it. I guess I was just, when I was listening to you, I thought anybody here could run into that dilemma.
Right, but I've been able to make every meeting except the meeting I was on vacation since, gosh, man, five years or four years or whatever.
One of the questions I was gonna ask the other day, Terry, was, and you can answer this hopefully, or maybe Mark can, is it the intention of the council to kind of stay with the, the city attorney style as we've been doing where we kind of have an on-call retainer from an out-of-town entity? Or is it ever the intention of going back to the style like we had with Mr. Havens, basically as a full-time employee?
Basically, where we are at this point is, I don't know that you can find anybody that has the expertise of an out-of-town. We all know that litigation is changing.
Right.
And going with a larger firm gives you the ability to have experts in everything.
Right.
Where now it's very, very hard to find somebody with a private practice, number one, that would come and work for the city, okay? I'm not saying they're not out there.
Right.
But will come to the city, bring to the table what a partnership can bring in areas of expertise like in, in planning, like expertise in marijuana laws, expertise in a lot of things. And we all know that the world is headed towards a litigation-based world. So it's always nice to have the experts, you know, or somebody that is very familiar with...
And I'm not disputing the validity of that. I was just curious if that was the intention or if this was kind of, if that was just kind of an interim stopgap until they found somebody closer location-wise to take the place?
I can't say that's not gonna happen, but I can say that I do not believe personally that that investigation is happening. I don't think that anybody is exploring that avenue at this point.
Okay.
I think that's right.
So my, I guess my statement would be is, if in the foreseeable future, that's kind of the direction we're going is with the off-site. And we, and I feel like it's very advantageous to, you know, adjust our meetings even though it isn't always... I can, I can definitely see philosophical reasons why, there's objections, but I would feel much more better, much more comfortable as a commissioner having a lawyer on site.
Yes. The, the, Mr. Chairman, and, and Mark, as my understanding too from sitting in on some of the city council meetings, is that one of the advantages of going to a large firm is that they come with their staff. Whereas a city attorney...
Which is the point I was trying to make, right.
A city attorney, well, the, you know, a lot of times that's legal staff.
Right.
But there's also people underneath them, you know...
That do a lot of things. We get a very, very rapid turnaround using a firm because they have, you know, we have the two partners that we work with and then they have staff below them that run the drafts and do this and do that. So anything we take to them is a very, very rapid turnaround, which is a, which is an asset for the city and the citizens of city.
So will it...
And because of that, and because of that, council recognized that if they wanted to go to the in-house attorney approach again, that, that there was likely have to be not just an attorney, but also an attorney in staff.
To keep the turnaround going.
Sure.
Well, once you get a contract, or once you get the contract finished, you'll know what the cost to city to do this and you'll be able to make a determination whether... Because I know you haven't gone out and looked around Fremont County for an attorney, you went straight to this, okay? And that was based on Mr. Havens.
John Havens did, during his planning, look and make recommendations of what to do and how to do it based on his experience with the city.
So that's the question I have.
Forward with, with, with John's recommendations and he would know better than probably any of us what it took.
Is there any more discussion about changing the date?
Are you setting this down? Okay.
Yes. Is everyone okay? I know what you guys are all saying and it's all, you know, it's all speculation what happens in the future.
Yeah, I know.
If we get a full-time attorney, it's just gonna be part of the job description that he's here on the 4th Wednesday every month.
Well, this does, this does pertain slightly to the date.
He or she.
Will the attorney that we, that will be sitting in with us, will be the same attorney each week? Or each session?
Not necessarily. And they aren't necessarily going to be here in person, but they will be here at least on the phone, if not in person.
Okay.
And with council, it seems that that works very well too. I mean, on some things that have happened telephonically. And basically, the nice thing about it is if they're listening and we have a question that's of legal, you know, legal ramifications, they can answer that question for us. And also, if we're doing something that might jeopardize what we're trying to accomplish, they will correct us on the point.
Okay.
So that, so that everything is good and clean.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Clark.
Terry, is there any other day other than one we are looking at right now? And the only reason I'm asking this, from listening to the discussion, although we set this in motion and we don't want to change it again, if we have to, what are we looking at, going back to the Tuesday or are there other options?
Well, in, in order to have attorney participation, Tuesdays are out completely.
Okay.
Tuesdays are out. Once that happened, I went to the city clerk, knowing that Tuesdays were not available, and I said, okay, let's talk about the rest of the days of the week. So obviously Friday, we're not having a meeting on a Friday. And then the city clerk basically did a process of elimination. Mondays are out. Wednesdays, most Wednesdays are out because we have vision committee and we have general government. And sometimes when those get postponed, they get postponed to the next week. There were possibilities of a Thursday, I think. But we didn't necessarily want to go that late in the week. So I, if you don't want to settle on this 4th Wednesday, I could go back and see if there's any other day that she would be able to slot us in.
Well, I guess I...
And then we, so I, you know, but this was the one that we landed on.
Okay, I, I guess I asked that question that if it runs into a train wreck, so to speak, we're not fishing for something.
Okay, I did do...
We have a viable option.
I did have a poll from all of you
Right.
that you could make this meeting this 4th Wednesday. So that's why, that's the other thing. Once I, we kind of knew that you could all make it, then we kind of landed on it. But happy to take it back again if you want to consider something else.
I, I think we should just... I think we're good. I think everyone's okay.
Thank you.
Aside from Councilman Gill maybe missing a few meetings, we should be fine. So I'd like to call for a motion for resolution number 1, 2017, changing the bylaws of the City Planning Commission to the 4th Wednesday from the 3rd Tuesday with meetings to begin at 6:00 PM instead of 7:00, beginning in October of 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I so move, as you stated.
Thank you. Commissioner Harmon?
I'll second that motion.
Second, Commissioner Clark. Any further discussion? Denise Call, roll please.
Commissioner Harmon.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Aye.
Chairman Maloney.
Aye.
Commissioner Bates.
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito.
Aye.
Commissioner Hammerick.
Aye.
And Commissioner Ladue.
Aye.
Okay, so we're good.
Well, let's do one other thing. If you could go to the schedule of the meeting dates and I kind of forgot to put this on here. We need to adopt the schedule for the rest of the year. As I explained, we would start this in October, on October 25th. Are you guys all at the calendar? Okay. November 22nd is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Maybe you would want to cancel that one.
We can make that determination to see if we have anything on the agenda at that time?
You can, but I, I hesitate to put anybody on that agenda. I'll have to note, well, we can, we can determine that in September or October. Let's see, hang on a minute.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
No, I can't do it in October.
Couldn't we automatically, without necessarily canceling that meeting tonight, just make provisions to set aside? I guess that would theoretically be canceling the meeting, wouldn't it? Forget what I said.
What we could do is wait until the next hearing, September 19th. We can't wait until October because if you notice my deadline, the deadline for submission of an application is September 25th. Wait a minute, no, it's October 23rd for November. So we wouldn't want to wait until October to cancel the November meeting. Would you like to just wait until September then? Go ahead and adopt this?
Yeah, and we can add it to, to the end of our agenda in September.
Okay.
And then decide.
Okay.
So do I need a motion to accept, to adopt the calendar?
Please, yes.
Would someone like to move to adopt the calendar as presented?
I so move.
Commissioner Hammerick, do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dorito? Denise Call, roll please.
Commissioner Hammerick.
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito.
Aye.
Chairman Maloney.
Aye.
Commissioner Bates.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon.
Aye.
And Commissioner Ladue.
Aye.
Okay, any other announcements? Anything for the good of the commission? Okay, then we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.